Six oh one, I just need to move on a second please. Councillor Grant, Councillor Morton. Now therefore be resolved that this July the twenty second regular meeting of council be called quarter at six oh one P M. And it looks like everyone is here and we do have forum. Just before we get into the the meeting, I'd just like to mention that we had a previous councillor of many years of the township, Jeff Latimer, just recently passed away. Donna, can you give me the exact case? It was two thousand and twenty one that he was a councillor?
For approximately nineteen years.
And leading up to two twenty twenty one, when he was no longer here. And of course, there's been other people in the township that have recently passed away, long time residents. Lada Maxwell just recently passed away, so just our condolences to the families of both of what? Kathleen Moore?
Oh, here we go.
I didn't know that. Oh, I didn't know that.
Or maybe if I had taken into it.
I'll take into it because, yeah, absolutely. And so if we can, the approval of the agenda. We're just making a slight change. We're going to move eight point seven. And the admin section up to eight point zero, that we have a presentation being made by John Tarantino. But other than that one adjustment, I'd like to get a mover or a seconder to approve the agenda. Moved by councillor Morton, seconded by councillor Grant. Now therefore be resolved that the council for the corporation municipality of Calvin hereby approves the amended agenda as circulated. All in favor? Carry. Any declarations of pecuniary interest? None? All right, approval of the previous minutes from June the twenty fourth. Any any additions, changes? All right, moved by councillor Morton, seconded by councillor Grant. Now therefore be resolved that the minutes of the regular council meeting of June the twenty fourth. And the minutes of the special council meeting of June the twenty fourth would be approved as presented and circulated. All in favor? And that is carried. We have no delegations to council.
I didn't vote on that. I wasn't, I was at the special but not the regular.
Okay, so.
I just didn't vote. That's fair.
That's fair. Absolutely. Oh. Business arriving arising from previous council meeting six point one, the fire marshals update. Re-fire personnel training and council resolution twenty twenty five dash two ten. If you remember, we passed in council resolution supporting another municipality's motion that the the training requirements are a little too stringent. So this is just an update on that. And if you care to give us the update, Chief Jordan, please do.
As far as the the email was sent from, I believe it was Don might know actually more about this than me, this is John Taggs email regarding the training.
He was just, yeah, he did. He did send an email to Chief Wally that they were considering how they were going to be able to actually talk about our own training initiatives and the grandfathering. And and we know that that hasn't changed. So they did say that.
Yeah, that part wasn't really related to the the resolutions through council. That's a whole separate issue there. He just tried to separately email me about what was going on within our training standards and kind of if I supported it. And obviously, like, I don't necessarily support their legislation they have right now for training, but.
But we quickly brought it back around to this wasn't Chief Wally's resolution. This was council's resolution. And if he had an issue with council in the resolution, that he was more than welcome to address council and not Chief Wally about their resolution. And from there on, we heard nothing.
Yeah, we haven't heard anything back.
So then we're just moving on, correct? All right, so can I get a mover or a seconder for this motion, please? Councillor Morton, Councillor Manson. Whereas the Fire Marshal's Office through John Macbeth Deputy Fire Marshal Training Certification and Public Education on July nine submitted correspondence to Fire Chief Wally with respect to council's resolution twenty twenty five dash two ten. And information related to the outstanding actions with respect to grandfathering training for for current fire department personnel. And whereas Mr. Macbeth was invited to submit a verbal or written report to update the council at tonight's meeting. And whereas Mr. Macbeth indicated key staff would be in touch with the fire chiefs to discuss the next steps to achieving training recognition for fire department personnel. Now therefore be resolved, the council for the corporation municipality of Calvin requests the fire chief to keep them apprised of further actions as it relates to the outcome of that recognition plan. All those in favor? And I'm as well. That is carried. So the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Were there any items that anyone wanted to bring forward? Done? All right, so moved by councillor Grant, seconded by councillor Manson. Now therefore be resolved that the council for the corporation of municipality Calvin hereby received the consent agenda items as presented. All those in favor? I'm as well, so that's carried. Administrative matters. So as mentioned in the opening, we're jumping to eight point seven. In the agenda, which is the municipal asset management Ontario government requirements plan. And we have John Tarantino here with the verbal report. Would you like to introduce?
Yes, so that everyone who may not have been here when John's been here a couple of times now introducing asset management plan and the work that our municipalities have been taking with his help through away and C C B. We're welcoming John once again to give you an update about the July twenty twenty five requirements of all municipalities across Ontario. What that requirement actually entails, so that you have a little more of a general sense about what staff is required to do. What then council is required to do with that information, why and how important it is to budgeting and to the Ontario government and future future grants that we do receive from certain Ontario government agencies such as OSIF, GAST tax indirectly. And so John is going to take us through just a verbal report about where we are at, how that compares to the rest of the province. John, big, you know, big ask there, but joining us again tonight and for all of the help you've provided with so many of our staff as we walk through these annual processes, which are becoming ingrained in our everyday routine here at the municipality of Calvin.
Donna, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Councillors, thank you for the opportunity to chat. Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you perfectly. Thank you.
Thank you. If if you wish, I do have just a quick document that I've put together today that I'd be happy to share with you. It's not in any formal structure, but at least it gives you something to look at while I'm talking through the points. Is that okay?
Yes, is that okay?
Yeah.
Well, absolutely.
Thank you. So I'm going to share my screen. Where we go here? And I want to share window. Share window. Share. I saw. I'm hoping you folks can see this login page or this first page with Marmac on it. Great. So there's a couple of ways that we can take this conversation. One way is I can talk about the requirements. I can show you information regarding that. I'm also happy to answer any questions that you folks might have, so we can save that for the end or as I'm going through the presentation, I'm happy to take those questions. So as the C A O mentioned, this is a requirement that now is overdue. And what I wanted to do was just highlight for you right from the government website itself. What we're talking about is that this is, this deadline was July first twenty twenty five. Very few municipalities have actually submitted. And those that have submitted, what I'm hearing from a variety of sources is that the province is struggling trying to understand what their proposed levels of service are. And so there's a lot of internal discussion going on, but bottom line, the requirements are that for every asset that the municipality has, we need to establish levels of service. So whether that's a road or whether that's a culvert or whether that's a building. What is the level of service that the municipality wants to offer its citizens? What is the energy usage and the operating efficiency of those assets? What are the life cycle events and the financial strategy? So if we are going to keep our buildings open five days a week, what is the cost associated with doing that? What is the risk if we don't keep it open five days a week? What is the annual cost that we need to budget for? And is there any funding shortfall? So this is the requirement regardless of whether you have a single asset of a road or you have roads, sewer, water, bridges and buildings. The requirements are the same for every individual piece of asset. And so the first thing that we have done is we've really taken a proactive approach to looking at all the documentation that the municipality has with regards to assets. And so it could be financial plans, asset retirement obligation. It could also be related to emergency plan and fire services review. All of those documents that directly affect asset management. And once we did that, the next thing is of those assets, which one of those have regulations associated to it? So if the choice is that we are not going to offer that service, is there a legislative requirement and what is the risk of not offering that service? So as you can see here, these are the various assets that the municipality has. And we've tried to identify where possible the regulation that would ensure that that service was delivered. And once that service is delivered, then it becomes an issue of the citizen level of service. So are we giving the citizens what they're asking for? Are we doing more than what's required? Do we give them an opportunity to provide feedback? And then is that feedback taken into consideration? So those first three pages are just a real cursory overview of the requirements and the challenge that municipalities across Ontario are having in establishing the level of service and then tying that to a financial commitment. Any questions around just that quick overview? Anything that you folks would like to see me focus a little bit on?
John, can I just maybe bring up a couple of very different examples of the things that we're needing to track? So for example, this community hall that we're all sitting in. If we're going to keep this building open, what does that mean? So we first need to know the value of this building. How many lights, seriously, how many lights? What the washroom looks like, you know, is there an A O D A requirement? For example, then to have the have an accessible washroom and accessible doorway. How much does it cost to keep it open as far as energy consumption goes on an annual basis? And what do we have outside of invoices that tell us what the energy consumption is? That then falls into another plan, like you know that we're looking at submitting an application for funding to F C M to get that energy consumption done. It even gets into what is the cost for someone to clean this and how often? And what is the cost to that? What is the cost to? So it things like that too, if we look at fire department. So there's no legislation that says we need to have a community center. However, if we are to have a community center, what is the cost and what should we be putting aside in asset management reserves for this particular building? Moving over to fire department where there is legislative requirement as an example for fire gear. So we have to identify what that legislation legislative requirement is, how we're going to meet it. If we are to provide a fire service, what are the legislative requirements in providing levels of service to our community? So we go back to that establishing by law, look to see what services are we committed to providing? What is the cost? What are the legislative requirements? And where the equipment is concerned, whether it's tires on the truck or fire gear, how are we going to meet that requirement legislatively in order for us to continue to provide a service that we say that we will in an establishing by law for a fire department? So two very different types of services. And that's where we get into needing to talk about nitty grits. We've had to take an inventory of you know, door handles as an example. Yes, getting down that to that level of detail and what is the cost to purchase it? We have to go back and find what that cost was when we purchased it. What is the value of replacing that today? What is the life cycle? And now every time an invoice comes in when we're repairing, I don't know, repairing the the truck and the or the grader, for example, we we need new brakes on the grader. We have to go in now to asset management and talk about all of those maintenance requirements. And so that they extend the lifespan of that particular piece of equipment. So three sort of unique ways in which we, the the minute detail that we're involved in here now. And as John was saying, the Ontario government is struggling with the very few that they have received to say, what is it we're really asking for here? Right, John?
Yeah, absolutely right. And you've actually touched on a number of items that I've identified as well and maybe just from a different perspective, right? So there's a lot of requirement. And as an example, you have roads that you manage. You know, a roads needs study every five years is is a best practice. It's it's a professional standard. You have bridges. Those bridges fall under the O S I M report, which again, every two years. The buildings should have a building condition assessment every ten years. You know, the condition of the roof, the condition of the wall, the longevity of it. The accessibility, complacency, I mean, that's that's a critical one. Inspecting the culverts, collecting the dollar value associated with those levels of service. Those are all, again, components that are now becoming essential to be able to manage those assets. And if if the assets are not properly managed, you run into a situation that I think we're all familiar with with Bakir Strickland. And so that's a situation that municipalities are trying to avoid. Then these are some of the components of that. And so if you look at it, the condition of your buildings, the condition of your roads, your bridges, your fleet. We know, we believe there is no water aspect to it, but there is a component of water in your community center. Bridges and culverts all fall under the same criteria. So it requires staff to do more and to collect more data and manage more data. And so as we talk about that, this is a component that I think is really critical that has not been properly addressed in the number of municipalities, if not most of them. All municipalities, you know, talk about the fact of lack of resources. But there are very few that are actually tracking the amount of work that's going to go into this asset management plan and creating a document that can be reviewed both by council as well as presented to the province and saying that the amount of information that the province is demanding and requiring requires resources and resources that have the right skill sets and the right understanding and the right experience. So these are very integral components of the asset management. If you look at the assets that the municipality of Calvin has, so you've got roads, you've got bridges, you've also got culverts under three meters. And as I show you the quantity, you're going to start to understand the amount of effort and work that it's going to take going forward. As as Donna alluded to, from a building perspective, you know, keeping track of the wall, the roof, but then also all the various components, whether they be electrical, mechanical, plumbing. This is all the degree of accuracy that the inventory must contain in order to be able to establish that. And when you think it's all done, the province will be throwing more things at you such as managing natural assets. And so this is not something that's going to go away. This is something that there will be more and more requests and demand as the municipalities start to understand and better manage their assets. So just as an example, you've got about ten bridges or so, and I can go into the details of the cost to replace them and the cost to maintain them. Your roads of gravel and low class bituminous and the replacement cost. There are approximately three hundred and thirty one culverts in the municipality. If you put a reasonable dollar value to replace it, there's there's approximately three million dollars of culverts that are installed. You have a fleet that's got a value of about two million dollars. You've got a number of facilities with a replacement value of eight million. Now again, these numbers, the more accurate we collect the inventory, the more accurate these numbers will be. And interestingly enough, of all the asset management plans that I have seen for small to midsize municipalities, there are very few that, if any at all, that actually identify the fire department as a large consumer of both energy efficiency and dollar value. When you look at the material and the equipment that's needed in order to offer that service. And then what are the levels of service that the fire department wants to achieve? And so all of these assets require the municipality to track. What do we do on an ongoing basis to extend the life of those assets? How we do that is by routine inspections. So it's no longer sufficient to just indiscriminately do inspections. They need to be done regularly. They need to be tracked against the asset that you have. And then the work order that validates that the inspection is done and that any deficiencies are dealt with. So all of that is asset management. And then ultimately, with all of those assets, it boils down to what are you going to offer to your citizens? What's the cost of and the expectations? What is the risk of not doing those different levels of services or holding back on them? And if you choose to hold back on some of those, you know, how do you become compliant with, you know, the climate rechange and the net zero? And managing the assets to the point that if we say it's going to last for ten years, that it lasts for ten years and there's there's no surprise coming back to council in five years to say, well, because we didn't do such and such, we need an advance or we need to find money to do something. The cost savings come in being able to extend the life of the asset and reducing the unforeseen occurrences that might happen. And so all of this together then is tied down to your financial. And and this is where a lot of municipalities are struggling, right? They're struggling with what will be our tax rate going forward? From a practical perspective and from a realistic one, beyond the tax, where are we going to get additional funding to help us through this? And what I did was I just collected a few pieces of information from a financial perspective that I think really highlights the importance and highlights the costs from a financial perspective. And so, you know, what we're trying to offer our municipality, our citizens are, you know, roads that are in good condition. Well, there's five hundred and forty thousand dollars, you know. We want to offer fire protection and recreation. Well, there's another hundred thousand. We need to invest in maintaining our bridges. So these are all costs that are associated to your assets. And then all of a sudden, you get hit with all kinds of costs that are not directly linked to assets that you own. But however, they're connected to the level of service that you may wish to offer your citizens. And so the asset management is the collection of the inventory, the maintenance and the routine inspections of that inventory, the level of service that you want to offer your citizens. And then at the end of all that is, how can we afford to do it? And there will be some delicate discussions about lowering or modifying the levels of service. And so all of this that I've shown you, we've worked diligently with the town staff and we've collected that information. So we have collected the inventory. We can show you charts and graphs and pictures and and paint for you that ten or twenty year plan from a roads and from a land and from a culvert perspective. We can also show you from a building perspective as an example. There are twenty five individual assets, buildings, land. Within that, there are a hundred and thirty two pieces of equipment. Those pieces of equipment combined have a replacement value of four million dollars. And so by collecting the information, we can create a forecast that better utilizes the information and provides council with foresight into, you know, what is the reality of the next five to ten years? With that being said, I I'm happy to take any questions that that you folks might have for me.
Question, um, there's obviously a draft document on the screen. When when does council have access to a I don't know, I want to say finalized because it's never final, but you know, a working draft document to review. What what it is, I guess, here moving forward?
So we have the document, in in other words, the verbiage of it. We have a lot of the information. Here's the reality, right? We want to provide you the document that is actually validated by the data that we've collected. The challenge or the mistake that a lot of other municipalities make is they present something to council, but they don't validate the data. They simply put disclaimers in there that, well, we don't have all the data. We don't have all of this information. And so our approach is we'd rather validate what's there to a reasonable level. And I think the short answer to your question is if everything works out well, probably within a month, you should be able to have it.
That's my question. Any other questions? That's gonna be mine. Done?
So I just want to say that it has been an all hands on deck.
So I just want to say that it has been an all hands on deck. And it's not the staff person, including every member of the roads department and fire, you know, Jordan's been at this for a while too. Before him, Mario at the landfill. This has been every single member of our staff has been involved in collecting this data. To try to meet the July one deadline, which was simply impossible. And as John said, most municipalities across Ontario have not met this deadline. You mentioned a full case Strickland. I think that when you receive this piece of information and you determine that you're going to continue to provide the. Exact same level of service that you have today, how are you going to afford that is what this will tell you and. The government of Ontario has started since last year and including right now, every time we ask for. OCF funding to be applied to a certain project, they want to know where this appears in our asset management plan. At what level is it? Is it been identified as a high priority, as a low priority, whether that's a bridge? An individual culvert, because yes, every single sign has had to be GPSed and marked. And located as each culprit has been each road. So we're not talking about roads in general. We're talking about each individual road. Each individual culvert, each individual computer is that level of minute detail. And then finding out what that did cost when it was placed there. So it's been a crazy, it's crazy meeting. And I think that you'll need more than another short, brief presentation to fully grasp what the next step is. Because the government of Ontario is saying that they're holding councils. To this document and what your level of service is and why you need funding from them when you do and what you have done. As a council through taxation and other forms of revenue. And there aren't a lot out there, right? I mean, we've talked about. How do you expand or. Fix your community hall or your community halls different, your administrative office, your garage, your fire hall. There's absolutely zero funding out there to do that unless it's every once in a while. So. As John said, some very delicate conversations are going to come forward to municipalities and councils across the province when everyone gets into this. And the government of Ontario is promising that they're going to hold you accountable to this plan. So it's a, it's a very serious and finding the time here, right? I mean, while it's been all hands on deck. Once we have collected the information, as you say, Dean, it's a living, breathing document and you have to keep it updated with every invoice that comes in. With every piece of, every time somebody comes in and fixes, you know, or repairs a piece of equipment, that needs to be uploaded and. It's not uploading it, it's keying in. So it's a, and I know, I know exactly what some of you are thinking is how do we afford this? And it's my question too. How do you afford to do the work that's required just to keep the asset management from a time perspective? And a staffing level, somebody needs to do this. Somebody needs to continue to be able to pull all this information together and to bring you a report, not just every five years. But as John is saying, last year you had an asset management plan that required certain things. This was now the next year. There's something else coming the next year. So that in a nutshell, try to keep them down to eight point seven so that it was further on down the line. Because it sounds a little bit gloom and gloom because it really is a serious issue that I don't know how anyone across the province is going to manage this. Regardless of how big or small your municipality is, it's all about taxation.
I I do have a question too. We were at a minister's meeting. And Minister of Finance and one of the CEOs of another municipality. Suggested that this was a great burden on the municipality. And how are they expected to maintain the services in the roads that they maintain when there are all of these? Regulations and time consuming procedures coming down the pipes. And of course, the answer was, well, it just has to be done. It just has to be done. Are, is the provincial government helping by trying to simplify the process by making things a little bit more. Standardized templates for the municipalities. And it seems to me when I listen to all of this, this is an enormous amount of. Staff time, taking them away from doing things that they should be doing. And. Maybe if this was the city of North Bay where you had dedicated staff and accounting people. Who did nothing but this kind of work all day, it would be different. But here you're taking, you know, the clerk, the C O, you're taking the superintendent, fire chief. And you're saying, here, just do these, this ten hours of work a week and leave something else behind. How is the government going to assist? To make this process a little bit easier? Tough question, I know, but one I have to ask.
Well, and I I what what I believe is that that they're not streamlining anything. They're not providing additional funds. The challenge is that what they're trying to do is. It is a lot of work collecting and structuring and managing the data. And what I can tell you honestly and truthfully is that. The municipality has done a very good job at collecting and structuring that data. Where we're now in the process is in establishing the workflow. And we need to be able to be diligent at it to identify how we can make this work. And one of the approaches that we've taken is if the information is collected and maintained. Then you as the elected officials have the ability to on a regular basis. See the success and see the evolution of the assets. Through simple interfaces that will provide you with that information. But as to. The province providing additional funding or the province providing guidelines. I will tell you that when it comes to your non-core assets, which are your buildings, your fleet and your parks. The asset management requirement clearly states. Every municipality can pick and choose their own level of service for those assets. And that's why the province is now struggling is because based on those comments. We, there, there's municipalities that have said, you know, maintaining our roads is the highest priority or level of services five. And they've identified that for every asset. But they failed to identify what are they going to do and what is the cost for that? And now that the province has received those documents, now they're struggling with trying to make sense of it. And maybe. If there's enough municipalities that band together in an organized fashion. Then they may have to relook at providing enough resources for this.
Thank you. That is answered my question.
And if I could interrupt for a second, I wasn't at that meeting with the Minister of Finance in North Bay, but I recall you said it was a local mayor who posed that question. Oh, I thought you said it was a mayor before. But to answer your question about what is the government prepared to do or what are they doing? What was the Minister of Finance's response? Because that would be your answer.
The minister said they would take it under advisement. Well, that was what the Minister of Finance said. We will take it under advisement. And and her comment specifically was. We do not have the staff to do this and to do it properly, we need to hire a professional. Which is going to cost additional money. We need assistance.
And earlier at the very beginning, John said something that was key because, and this isn't about our own staff, but. We can't just, we tried this just to put someone who didn't know. Much like we gave somebody who might have had some extra time, we put them on this job. And it turned out to be not the right thing because, John, what you said there is key. You need to be able to understand the importance of that piece of equipment. Where to look on that, you know, to build, to bring that piece of equipment down to its components. It's not something that we can just throw a summer student on as an example, right? It's too important to your future as a municipality and to council determining what levels of service. And that's a whole other discussion is what do we mean by what is a level of service? It's not enough to say we want that road to be, we want to continue to have peddlers drive. In a good state. What does good state, we have to break it down to, what do you mean by in a good state? You know, so all of those things for every piece of asset that we have need to come into, you know, a discussion. Not about the door handle, but about, you know, the hall and keeping it open and how often and how many days a week and how many hours a day. All of those things, right? So. That's, that's in a nutshell where we're at.
If if you'll afford me just one moment, because I I I think there's. Something that I'd like to share with you that we're working with other municipalities and and I think you'll just quickly. Highlight the point, just bear with me for a second here. Here we are. So when we talk about level of service. Here it is. So this is just to highlight the amount of work. That municipalities are undertaking. And so I'll share with you, this is. Work that we are doing with the township of Sterling Rotten near Belleville, approximately population of just under ten thousand. But this is our collaboration with them in establishing levels of service. And so. If I scroll down and just bear with me, I'm going to go to a road section because that will make a lot of sense here. So. Collectively, this is the amount, this is just to show you the amount of work that needs to be done, right? We talk about roads. We say we want a hundred percent of the roads accessible. We want the roads to be compliant with the minimum maintenance standard. We want to track. The traffic flow. We want to do a roads need study every five years. We want our roads to be. At a P C A, at a condition that is good. Then these are the steps that are required, right? Brushing, ditching, graveling, resurfacing, sweeping, winter maintenance, road cuts. We then identify what is the approximate cost on a yearly basis. For each one of those tasks. And although the town of Sterling Rotten has more assets, once we structure the data this way. And we just scroll down to the bottom. For them, before you start doing anything every year, there's a short, a shortfall. There, there's a need. For seven hundred thousand dollars just to continue to do the same level of service. And so. The question that was asked earlier is how soon can the document be ready? The response is the verbiage of the document, it's done, it doesn't change. The challenge will be sitting down with staff, identifying what those levels of service are and. Then having council approve and validate that to be able to generate that document. There's no sense generating that document if council has not approved and validated that. That's the level and that's the funding they're willing to commit. And this is the part that takes the most effort and work.
John, just one more thing. We've been very fortunate to have you assisting us since shortly after I came on. And that's been, we've not paid any cash out of our taxation dollars to have John assist us through this process. We've MFOA as generously offered us a couple of times, some fifteen hours here, fifteen hours there. John and his team staff at no cost. We've also been able to access the gas tax CCBF. Dollars in order to continue to have John help us through understanding and guiding us through this process. And John, how many, and John often, so that you know, the other fortunate, I'm I'm boasting here about you because I think it's important that. But you're not just one of those consultants that we've picked up off the street who doesn't have experience here, but he actually leads much of the training across the province on behalf of. MFOA and the Government of Ontario. So we're really fortunate to have John working with us to guide us through this because he is a pro and so is his team. At what they do. And if anybody likes hockey, he even has a couple of hockey teams that he does asset management for. Right, John?
Absolutely. Thank you very much for those kind words.
Yeah. So thank you so much for your continued advice and guidance and help and patience. As we continue to bring on new people here in Calvin to help us through this process. So I don't think there's anyone in the organization. That you haven't met, well, maybe a couple of them at landfill. But John has touched base with every single person, mostly in our staff to help us. To engage them in this process, so.
Thank you, John. Thank you very much for. Helping us out and helping us understand.
Thank you very much for your time, folks. Bye bye.
Bye bye. Wait one sec. Just, just a comment that this is a tremendous, let I say, a ridiculous amount of work to get this. Living document to come alive and built up with appropriate values. But when it's done, it will let us evaluate the level of service. And that's, that's going to tell us what, or allow us to. Gauge and balance, you know, maybe everything will be fine. I suspect not. But make, make some decisions on how we proceed. So. And no doubt it'll be tied to funding and tied to all kinds of things. So it's, you know. Necessary process to go through, but at least there will be some, some benefit at the end of the day with it.
All right.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, John.
Bye bye.
Bye now. Sorry, I didn't.
No, it's okay. And that's not because I don't need John here to say. I think a big part of the asset management plan is so that the province has an understanding. Of what, what position the municipalities are in in the province of Ontario. Which would also aid in their ability to perhaps fund in the future. I just think that through the asset management plans that are going to be given. By the four hundred and forty four municipalities, I believe the first nationals are also involved in asset management planning as well. I think it'll paint a larger picture for the province of Ontario. Understand where the inefficiencies, the deficiencies, the lack of funding. So I think it may benefit. Everybody as well as, as much as it's such a pain currently.
Thanks for your comments.
I forgot what Robert, he was hidden behind the screen here.
Oh, Robert, did you, I'm sorry, did you have any comments? John has left us, but we couldn't see you. You were behind the document.
Uh, no, I don't have any comment. Well, I do have a comment. It's just a, seems like an overwhelming task, but. Needs to be done, obviously.
I I count forty two door locks, so just.
How many pens do you have?
All right, if I can have a mover in a second or to accept this report, please. John Manson and Bill Morton, whereas John Tarantino, Mayor, Mayor Mac presented details of. Municipalities asset management requirements as set out by the Ontario government, including how they impact municipal financial planning. And government funding and the status of the municipality's collection of key asset data now therefore be resolved. That the council for the Corporation of Municipality of Calvin hereby heard and accepts the presentation given by Mayor Mac, John Tarantino. All those in favor? And that is carried. So moving back to item eight point one. Which is. The fire chief report. And I will turn that over to you.
So my report is for the month of June. Crazy month, as we all know here. We had seven total calls, including a state of emergency. Was a stressful month for a lot of the guys, an abnormal month. The. The package has a couple of things highlighted in it. We have. Successfully started taking MCO income, which is nice. So there's an Excel sheet there. You can see the. The payments that we received so far to date. And we also have finalized some public education packages that are going to be sent out this month. I'm going to try to do that along with our fire prevention officer. And this month we have nine members. If there's any questions that I have. Everything should be okay.
Thank you, Chief Wally. I I just read your fire safety at home and I think that's, you know, really. Positive and good. It's posted on the, the. Fire Department's Facebook page.
Yeah, I prepared, so I just did a short, just to kind of go with the emergency, the state of emergency we just had. Just to update people on, you know, being prepared. Um, just to update people on, you know, being prepared at home. There's a little. What's on Facebook about, you know, things you should have in your home and. Kind of a little two-page, uh, preparedness document.
Believe it or not, I'm, I'm sure there's a lot of people who don't know half of what's in that, wants to prepare.
Yeah.
Um, any, uh, questions or go ahead, Council Manson?
Thank you very much for the report. It's super thorough. It's a great template for. How it, how reports like this should look. You do, do a fantastic job and not only in report writing, but that's. Huge, but also in the last month, I'm sure you've been running off your feet doing a tremendous job and it's super appreciated. So thanks for being here. Thanks for your excellent reporting and thanks for doing an outstanding job on the job.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Uh, anybody else? Comments, questions? Bring on the table, go ahead once and I, I let you out last time.
No, no, it's not my turn.
Okay. Donovan, anything?
No, again, I just echo, you know, John's sentiments and words and I, and I do want to really congratulate. Congratulate Jordan, who's never been a really a part of all these report writings and, um, you know, for. Following this template that we created quite some time ago, we're having no issues with it. We've talked, you know, through and through. And especially, you know, the recognition for fire and what you've been through in the last few months or the last month for sure. And the fact that we are now for the first time in almost three years. Are receiving the cash from the M T O callouts and so far that's amounted to eleven thousand dollars every time we called out. So that. Really is one, and you hear a little bit more, we'll talk about budget at the meeting on Friday. About how and, you know, some of the ideas that we have about how to make use of those funds. So when we. Get into open discussion about budget, we'll talk more about those M T O funds and. How they can benefit, um, and come back to the fire department for the benefit, so. Thank you.
So, um, uh, just a mover and a seconder to accept the report. Moved by Counselor Morton, seconded by Counselor Manson, now therefore be resolved that the council from the corporation. Excuse me, the municipality of Calvin accepts the June twenty twenty-five fire chief report as presented. All those in favor? And I miss Wells, so that is carried. Next item on the agenda, uh, is a funding request by the, uh. Uh, Legion, uh, before I ask for a mover or a seconder, I should mention that we do have a. Uh, a form within the, the municipality as to how, uh, funding, uh, requests are received. This is out of the ordinary. Um. Out of the ordinary way of, of requesting a funding request, but I guess. We, uh, received a lot of, uh, assistance from the Legion. Uh, during this emergency, they, uh, did a lot of the volunteer work at the. Um, Mike Roden Arena, when the people were there with, uh, providing meals and, and so on. So they have requested, um. Uh, uh, gift voucher, uh, to, um. Uh, they're hosting at Voyager Days, uh, Legion Bingo and, uh, they're, they're, um. Looking for donation and prizes for this event. So, uh, if council so pleases. Uh, we can, uh, offer to make a donation to the Legion. Hundred dollars, something like that. Um. Discussion, any discussion?
Last year I suggested we give a hundred dollars to Madawal Voyager Day. Almost had my head bitten off. So I, I agree that they did a lot of work to support us that. At the arena that night. But, uh, it's up to council whether they want to. Do something. I think we have a. Already have a resolution that.
Yes, we do.
Oh, I, uh, can think they're tremendously worthy, um, recipient, but at the same time, especially this year with our budget. Being, uh, you know, last month through a, a large wrench in our budget. I think. Making the decision on residents' behalf to donate with tax dollars is, is not something that I'm comfortable doing. Unless it's a really bizarre situation. So as much as I'd like to authorize tax dollars to do that, I just don't think it's reasonable.
Any other comments before I call the resolution to a vote? Mover and a seconder. Well, I haven't got that for you.
They can't have a vote until you open.
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm asking for any other comments. Counselor Latimer, Counselor Grant? Any feelings?
I think I'm just going to vote. I, uh, in second, uh. I think they're very difficult positions to be in as a counselor, but second, Jones comments, uh, and, uh. You know, um. Think we need to, you know, the resolution has a blank.
Thirty dollars.
It does, yeah. Um, which makes things more complicated, but, um. You know, once that blank's filled in, I might, uh. Might sway me in each direction, but I do echo John's, uh, comments.
All right, so I'll, I'll call it to a vote, uh, and put a dollar value of a suggestion of a hundred dollars and it can either be defeated or, or approved. So I need a mover and a seconder? Oh, mover and a seconder?
Moving it because of the hundred dollars, are you moving it?
Sure, I'll move it. Seconder? No, going once, going twice? Robert, oh, Robert seconded, Counselor. Latimer. Whereas Royal Canadian Legion Branch Two fifty-four volunteered an enormous amount of time and funds. To come to the aid of Samuel de Champagne campers during the June twenty-fifth storm and whereas they're formally requesting a donation. With the purchase of a new bingo board and machine for the month. Uh, bingo to support the costs of the Legion's building revitalization project. Now therefore be resolved at the council for the corporation of the municipality of Calvin resolves to contribute. A hundred dollars towards the endeavor. All in favor? Oh, then it is carried. All right, uh, next item on the agenda is the, the, uh, C E O report for the accessibility of Ontario's. Disability Act audit results.
In a nutshell, it's completely passed and it's over. There we go.
All right, any questions or comments? You've read the report. Whereas, uh, council, oh, sorry, mover and a seconder to accept the report. Counselor Morton, Counselor Latimer. Uh, whereas the council for the corporation municipality of Calvin receives and discussed the C E O's report. Uh, C E O thirty dash twenty twenty-five accessibility for Ontarians Disability Act Municipal Compliance and Audit Report. Indicating the audit is complete and that no further information is required. Now therefore be resolved that the council received. And accepted report as presented. All those in favor? Carried. Next item on the agenda is the regional economic development opportunity. Uh, this is a verbal report. You don't have any documentation on this. Um. Uh, Donna and I, the C E O and I were invited to a meeting. With the other C E Os and, and mayors where we. Uh, batted around the idea of an economic development officer. Uh, essentially there is a Fednor grant. And, uh, we can apply for that Fednor grant and have one person. Uh, or. Actually, Dawn, can I get you to explain just that?
About the grants itself?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so the grant has been around for a long time and, uh, the municipality of Madawal called us all together in order to gauge the interest of. The C E Os and mayors to bring back to the councils, uh, the willingness to participate in a new economic development corporation. Which would function more as a committee and not its own entity. Um, and that Fednor has been looking forward to this region getting back into with the municipalities involvement. In an economic development, regional corporation, entity, committee of sorts. And what's available is one hundred thousand dollars per year in order to offset the costs. So we do have in the town of Madawal, um, others were asked to come to the forefront if they could host this person who would. Uh, take charge of being that staff person. So what's available is a hundred thousand dollars a year. And the commitment required for that application for funding is, and, and even across the board, twenty-five hundred dollars per municipality. To get into a three-year contract with Fednor. So the commitment would be twenty-five hundred dollars per year. For the next three years in order for the application, an application for funding to go to Fednor. Program is called S E N O Community Investment Northern Ontario for Economic Development. So that hundred thousand dollars would essentially cover the cost of a staff person, benefits, wages. Uh, any paper and some in-kind contributions from the host organization. So that's what we're looking. We are looking what the mayors and, uh, the mayors committed to bringing back to councils and at that table, if I might. There was, uh, unanimous approval, um, in principle from the mayors. Saying yes, like, that they were looking forward to bringing this to council at a cost of twenty-five hundred dollars a year. And the mayors made a decision that given the experience of late and of the past. In economic development at a regional level, that one of the first origins of business and Fednor would allow this, I know this through my experience is that. Um, we would build a business case and a, a business plan for whatever that regional economic development corporation might look like. Uh, in year one. So, uh, mayors decided that the C E Os would form the committee in the first year to build the case. Uh, the business case, the four C E Os. That would build the activities that would take place in year one and year two. So while initially. It would be the four municipalities that year one would talk about. What does that look like by the end of year one? What are the activities that we're going to involve ourselves in? Uh, there was some discussion, for example, about let's not recreate everything. Let's look at, you know, the key things that we know are needed. The region instead of, this is not going to be about. Reports on shelves that stay there. This is about real action. Towards things that actually are already identified as nee- needed in our region, so. Is that?
Yeah, that's good. Uh, just some other points that, uh, that everyone seemed that would need to know. This Fednor grant is only available to municipalities. It is not, uh, uh, available to a private, uh, board. So this would be separate from the other board that you, uh. Had a presentation from. But at some point in time, these two boards, uh, can amalgamate. And work together towards economic development. And this one here would be. A representative from each municipality, which would be our C E Os and the other board would have its own. Structure and we could, you know, work together. Um, we talked about the kind of economic development that's needed in the region and there has to be sort of a regional focus. Uh, and this particular program requires multiple municipalities, but not four. I mean, it could be three and if, uh, Calvin decided that it didn't want to be a part of this, they could. Not be part of it and the other ones could go on by themselves, but. We all felt that there was a need that this would be a mutual agreement between the four of us, so.
One more thing, just that the initially for the first year, the makeup of that committee would be the four C E Os, not forever. The four C E Os at the beginning in order to build the plan for where this. I don't, I don't want to use the word organization because it's not being set up as an individual, not-for-profit, separate entity. It's a committee of. The host in this, in this particular time, but that the C E Os would initially form. What action needs to take place within. A business plan, we build a business plan for this organization in year one.
And I guess my feeling when I listened to what everyone had to say was twenty-five hundred dollars for a hundred thousand. Didn't seem outrageous. So anyway, with that, uh, discussional questions? Go ahead.
Just want to make note is this twenty-five hundred plus there's a cost associated with staff. Like, whoa. It's not like this time, right?
Oh, no, Donna's going to go after that.
Yeah, sure. It's an individual person. Oh, you mean as far as the first year?
Far as, you know, Donna would be just stating, there would be more time as well. I just.
Good point.
You know, uh, there's an allocation of time. It's not costs, the allocation of time.
Yeah, I get it.
What is the, do we? We understand, what is the deadline of this application? Like, is there a deadline on the application in terms of timing? Where this is open funding right now and. This is my question.
Yeah, the funding's, uh, continuous intake. It's been there for a number of years. However, what the mayors and C E Os, what the mayors, sorry, not C E Os, discussed, but what the mayors decided upon was that. The motion would be brought to the next opportune time, the next meeting of councils. We are all meeting this week. And except for Madawan doesn't need until August. So the goal was by the end of August, have an application ready. For whomever decided that they would be participating to be submitted. Because it will take time in order to get that approved with the questions back and forth. So. Hypothetically, if we're submitting this application first week of September, it could impact some of this year's budget if they were approved. And let's get going, you can get, you know, get going on that. So hypothetically, this could. Potentially occur if we were to submit an application, October, November, maybe December. So you're looking at maybe one month, one or two months. Twenty-five hundred dollars divided by twelve times two maximum.
Just so I can finish off my documents, please, uh. Um, I think, uh. Potentially tremendous value for the money, um, in terms that, you know, you put up twenty-five hundred, this potentially accesses a hundred thousand. Um, just concerns me is just, um. There's, um. It's assuming that, you know, we're assuming that. We're, the values is very tricky, but we're assuming that we just spend a hundred, like, there has to be, there's no plan yet, you know, like, there's just this. It's all very, very early. First year would be making the plan. Yeah, I just think it's like. I don't know, I just, i- i- in government, we're going to commit to something, uh. And just hope for the best, I guess, is where I'm, where I'm at. And, you know, I'm sure we'll see some benefit, but. It's just in contrast to the previous presentation where there's. Separate, I'm just saying contrast to the plan, you know, this is, you know, some of the outcomes, so. Uh, it's a tough one because I think there's value there, but, um. You know, the presentation, uh, I think lacks detail. Okay, that's just my comment.
Uh, Counselor Latimer?
Yeah, who are the other municipalities there for? And. I guess, uh, you make an application in August, the money's not coming in September. How, what, what, uh. What's kind of a timeline is realistic for approval for this one hundred thousand dollars? And probably this question is too early, but who would this economic development person report to? How would that be structured? What's the governance? I mean, I, I know it's, you have, you've just kicked it off. Maybe that's, uh. Little too early to ask that question.
Part of your question, four municipalities are Calvin, Papo, Cameron, Madawal and.
Okay. And approval of the funding would be probably by next spring. Early winter.
Well, this Fednor application, my experience is that it would be. Fact that it would be by November. If we submitted very early September, we could expect the response November. So that's why I was saying. You were looking at twenty-five hundred divided by twelve months times two months of this year's budget is what I would anticipate. As governance would go, the host organization in this case, because we're not talking about at this point in time. Setting up a separately incorporated organization, it would be a committee of Madawal that would be great written in its terms of reference. That representative would be the C E Os. Who would in Fednor, rather than pulling us all together and thinking that we all know what a business, we don't want to build a business plan at this point in time. That first year is about engaging someone to help us reach out to as an organization, as municipalities. Not going to exclude participation in the development of the business plan. It would be reaching out to community at large throughout our region to design a business.
I, for some reason, I can't hear a lot of what you're saying. I don't know if it's because you're looking at the monitor or instead of the owl, but. I don't know if that's the, uh, technical thing, but, uh. I can't hear what you're saying. No. Something wrong with the, uh, mic picking up. Can't hear you, sorry.
Uh, can you hear me now?
Yes, yeah, I can hear you now.
I'm just gonna attempt to re-answer your question.
That's fine, I can uh, uh, we, we can, I can pick it up later. I think I, I heard enough to get an answer, I think. It's early days.
No, okay. You want to pick it up later or you want me to repeat?
No, I'll, I'll get it later. It's not that critical.
Council Morgan?
Well, compared to the uh, previous presentation, I think this is a far better economic uh, mode. But uh, my concern is the uh, the impact on the staffing, like. Every meeting we come, we thought here about how busy this, yet now we're gonna take our CEO away. And the other CEOs too, but I don't know how busy they are, but I know Donna and Tricia swamped. And now we're, now we're tasking her with something else. It's like in previous council where they gave somebody like thirteen hats. And swamped them. Good point.
Yes, please.
So it's not that we would be doing the work. In year one, we would be hiring someone to work with us. And we would be guiding that person who would do the work.
But you still have to have meetings, so you're taking it away from the office and taking.
Yeah.
Taking, but and I think Don, uh, Dan, Dean Grant touched on it too about the impact on the staffing and that's. My, my only concern is the fact that you're busy enough as it is and. I don't think uh, I agree that you're probably the best person to be on that committee, but. There should be some other, but people doing it because our own staff are just too busy.
And, and I, I guess I'll just say that we'll be meeting monthly, I would assume monthly. And when I look at what we were trying to do on our own, the strategic plan, this would take away from that. In that we would now have this other body and this other organization helping us to build our strategic plan. Rather than us all requiring to be in more meetings, costing more money in effect. So I don't, I think. Everyone knows here how I feel about regional economic development and that's all I'm gonna say. It's your decision, right? Um, in the end.
All right, so uh, any last comments before I bring this to a vote? None? Right, can I get a mover in a second or please? I'm gonna read the resolution as, as it's written. Uh, Council Manson and Council Grant. Whereas municipality, uh, sorry, whereas the council for the corporation of municipality of Calvin received a verbal report from Mayor Gould. About a regional economic development initiative opportunity for the municipality of Calvin. In partnership with the municipalities of Madawala, Madawan, Papano, Cameron. Can you hear me, Robert? Okay. Uh, and whereas the federal government through Fednor Community Investment Initiative for Northern Ontario, Sino. Program will fund up to a hundred thousand dollars per year to eligible and successful municipalities who partner. And apply to carry out regional economic development program. And whereas it is recognized that an approved application would require three-year, two thousand five hundred dollar per year commitment from each member municipality. Now therefore be resolved that the council for the corporation municipality of Calvin agrees to partner with its neighboring municipality. In a joint application to Fednor's Sino program and further that as recommended by mayors of each partnering. Municipality during the first year of an approved grant council for the corporation municipality of Calvin accepts. That it, along with all participating councils, will be presented on a newly formed committee. By their uh, represented uh, on a newly formed committee. Uh, by their chief administrative officers who will jointly develop and implement a business action plan. All wills in favor. All right, so that is carried. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the estimated, oh, this is a big one here. Estimated costs of the two thousand twenty-five Slater Emergency and Finance Recovery Plan. Uh, turned over to the CAO.
Hey, want to shorten, sweetie, of it all, five hundred thousand dollars. That's the estimate cost of what uh, this uh. The storm cost us. And just a little bit of a breakdown on that. Um, we're estimating that roads. Uh, the cost to us will be about four hundred thousand dollars. That includes repairs to culverts to the roads itself, the ditching that needed to occur to one of the bridges. That's an estimate because not all quotes are in, not all work has been performed yet. Uh, there's a small amount of dollars uh, for fire and that's about ten thousand dollars in points. To uh, honor the time that uh, fire crew spent there during that time. Uh, some money towards uh, so essentially any, every one of the staff who was involved except for Jordan, myself and Anne. And where they had overtime. So where our own staff performed to work during regular business hours. We can't claim that time because there's no additional cost. But when they worked overtime, we actually have to pay it out. To prove that we had extra costs. So that's how the five hundred thousand dollars is broken down. Uh, Julie's time is CEMC for the few days that she participated um, and the report writing uh. When we get to a roundtable, we'll talk about how that um, you know, what that work entailed a little bit more. Um. There is a, a request through the Municipal Disaster Relief Program. Uh, the first part of, the first seventy-five percent of our costs, so we have to look at what our taxation level is. We're only eligible for this funding if we spend more than three percent of that total taxation. We're well beyond that at five hundred thousand dollars. So the first seventy-five percent of our expenses are only covered at a twenty-five percent level. Of, of approved, let me say that, of approved expenses. Then any expense after the first seventy-five percent is redeemable at, through this M giraffe program. At ninety percent, ninety-five percent. So all to say, we need to find five hundred thousand dollars and pretty darn quick because we have bills coming in already for these costs. So. Uh, the municipal affairs has also informed us that. We are completely responsible for all costs associated with the evacuation of the park. Because uh, the park is a taxpayer and uh, we're responsible for those costs. So the evacuation center costs, you know, staff time for uh, town of Madawala to come in and have their people work that. For the Red Cross estimated, I don't have a, don't have an invoice estimated to be somewhere between sixteen and twenty thousand dollars for bringing in beds. And their people. This municipality is responsible for all costs associated with the park evacuation. When we're on that note, I also want to mention that um, and thanks Jordan for clarifying uh, what mutual aid means. So while we had fire from West Nipissing, North Bay, East Ferris, Madawala. Longfield. South River McCarr. Due to the fact that mutual aid can take fire departments to anywhere in Ontario that are required, those funds are not recoverable. So those municipalities have to eat up the costs of their fire department coming to our aid. In order to rescue people from park where people pay to enter. I shouldn't have said that aloud, but I did. Um, so that's why, I mean, we're, we're working on some ends and you'll hear around, in the roundtable a little bit later. There is no way for them to recover that cost right now. We are working on that in the background so that you know, and we do have support. Um, in government there helping work through that. But for us, our, our costs are estimated to be five hundred thousand dollars. Because we don't have that kind of money in the bank, I then had to come up with a plan um, to present to you for how do we get? Five hundred thousand dollars in the bank really quick, because as you know, the roads have been repaired for the most part. Uh, there's still some work to be done. We haven't paid out fire. We only have a hundred and twenty days to get this claimed in. With all of the expenses or good proof about what that expense might be through quotes and things. I'm pretty confident I was in a hundred and twenty day deadline, let's say a hundred and ten day deadline, give me time to write the report. That we're going to be able to complete all of the work necessary on our roads with fire. Yeah, they were so busy there, but the cost is ten thousand dollars. It's really negligible and some. And some of the equipment costs, which Jordan and I still have to work out. We still need to find factor hundred thousand dollars approximately. Um, so the, the plan that I came up with is as follows. I did call the mayor and uh, Dean DeCare BDO into a meeting. Uh, last week to ask BDO what they thought of the plan, if they would suggest anything different and what that might, what that might be if yes. And uh, Dean DeCare, you will be uh, witness to, said absolutely he would change nothing in the plan that I had. And here is the plan. Um, if you remember the dump truck in two thousand twenty-four that we financed, the total value was four sixty-five, I believe in. We took two hundred thousand dollars cash and applied it towards that dump truck. If you recall, uh, Dean DeCare. Our auditor was not so pleased about that because he kept talking about the borrowing capacity that we have as a municipality. Why would we take two hundred thousand dollars of cash and we could borrow it for much cheaper? So this plan involves going now back to the bank and saying we want to borrow that two hundred dollars, thousand dollars. In the form of a loan to free up two hundred thousand dollars cash. And I'll keep talking about how this worked through with the bank. Bank has said, yes. Um, this sounds really sound to them. Also, it's not come back yet because it's had to go up the management level. Um, our advisor doesn't see that this will be a problem. So what that will do is immediately put two hundred thousand dollars into our bank account. Once that cash is uh, approved of. What I didn't say at the beginning was that the Ministry of Municipal Affairs has said that typically. These claims take one point five to two years in order to be approved, approved. So essentially for us to see the cash back. For the money that we incurred in two thousand twenty-five, we won't see that until two thousand twenty-six. Maybe two thousand twenty-seven. So we need to find a way, this isn't a short term, like in one month, you know, we'll get money back. No, we need to find a, a resolution to five hundred thousand. So two hundred thousand borrowing against that truck is part of that. What we could do then is once we receive that money back, we could then apply it towards the loan. We'll keep the loan as an open loan. In case that council would want to do that later is reapply that two hundred against that loan again. Cross that bridge and we'll get to it. Uh, the other is uh, redeeming the guaranteed investment certificate that we have at a hundred thirty-nine thousand. I've been renew, renewing that annually since I arrived because of the, the way things looked at the bank for that. And there is a penalty to cashing it out, um, working with our financial advisor at the bank. Uh, they today uh, waived that and uh, the mayor signed off on it. Prior to coming here because we knew that we had to find some cash. That hundred thirty-nine, it's near a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. I was informed late this afternoon, we'll be in our bank account today or tomorrow. That's how quickly they moved on it because they knew that we were in this position. Um, the other uh, thing that we have available to us is to establish the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar line of credit. So when you hear the budget on Friday, that does amount to more than five hundred thousand. However, we, you know, we're then gonna redeem the, it makes sense for a lot of reasons because that five hundred thousand is an estimate. So let's leave ourselves a little bit of wiggle room in there in case it becomes more, if it becomes less, we can pay it off. But it does allow us to find our way through what will be, what, what is today, a very tight financial situation. Um, yeah, so that's where it's at and uh, we need your approval to. Um, approve of this borrowing plan that uh, Dean DeCare auditor approved of, said he wouldn't change a thing in there.
I do have one question. Could you explain the seventy-five percent portion again? Uh, what, I, I.
Oh yeah, sorry, I did forget to mention that. So the seventy-five percent of the first. Of the first seventy-five percent of our costs, only, of the first twenty-five percent of our costs, sorry, only seventy-five percent are reimbursable. Which means if we use the Hackenbrook Bridge as an example, the cost of re, of um, remitting that bridge. At a build better. So has everyone been by the Hackenbrook Bridge to see what happened there and those Lego blocks that really are down there? So that cost, and this is the second time this bridge has fallen apart in the same fashion over time, not last year, the year before, but over time. So the cost to building that better to a state where this shouldn't happen again is fifty-eight thousand dollars, I believe in, is the cost.
Right, like a difference of twenty-three thousandish.
So no matter what, we can't in the guidelines build better. We have to. Bring it back to the state that it was. So while they're reimbursing it, they're not reimbursing us to make it better so that things never happen. So culverts will be replaced by bigger culverts than before so that we're, uh, why not, right? So that extra, what we call build it better, will be in our cost. In the case of the bridge, because of its dollar value, I'm going to count that in our claim as the first. Twenty-five percent of the cost. So that seventy-five percent of that bridge, the cost up to the build better. It's, it's hard to wrap, I almost need a map, right? Fifty-eight thousand dollars of which twenty-four thousand is build it better, I believe. That twenty-four thousand build it better is not eligible for reimbursement. However, I submitted through Ontario, um, our OCF fund. And they today approved that they would fund the build it better portion of twenty-five thousand dollars. And then the twenty-five percent that's not eligible for funding, I also got that covered through OCF. So I've already covered off the twenty-five percent of what's not eligible and the build it better of that bridge. So OCF is funding that part. So all of these pieces in essence to tell you that we found a way. If you approve this in order to cover off our five hundred thousand dollars, which will be repaid. But it might, but it will take a while.
Can I just interrupt for a second?
Their financial, I'm a little afraid.
No, it's um. Your history is, uh, has a lot of grant applications and planning for that. And that's shining through now because you have to. You know, like you say, need a roadmap just to explain the situation, uh, you know, as you just did. So I want to just, I'm grateful that you're keying this up and organizing this because it's, I'm sure it's just exceedingly confusing. And difficult to layer it down properly to max out the funding and to get all the costs covered. So I just want to say thank you for dealing with the complexity of this because I'm sure it's quite complicated.
I do want to put a shout out to our MPP though. Um, MPP Fidelli and I have been on the phone numerous times a week since the storm has, has happened. And he is pushing for us to see money faster and um.
Tell them the comment you made to the Minister of Emergency Affairs, uh, uh, what our driver.
So um, and we were gonna talk about that a little bit later, but um, one of the strategies that we together employed. Was that he did bring uh, the minister of the Emergency Management Services here last Friday. To take her on a tour of the devastation of the park. And by the way, here is the municipality of Calvin and. We showcased some of the damaged areas, including that very bridge. And uh, I invited uh, and, and Mr. Fidelli approved, and I think it was a really great move. Thank you, Jordan, for coming along with us and set. Our fire chief in the vehicle with the MPP and the park superintendent and uh, Mayor Gould and I. And the assistant for the uh, uh, for the, what's her name? Jill Dunlop, the Minister of Emergency Management Affairs. And so Jordan um, was able to talk about that day and we sort of had a little bit of prep time ahead of time, you know. And uh, he was there to hear some of the things that Mr. Fidelli was saying, but we are in public, so we have to be careful about, but uh, he was encouraging.
He was very encouraging, yeah. He was. On our side, I would say, through this. Had some great conversations in the truck with Jill Dunlop and they were both in awe.
And she got very, um, she was, she's very aware that we're a small municipality with small tax base who doesn't have five hundred thousand dollars. And that we are going to borrow money in order to fund this, um, this event, so.
I, I just have one other point that I'd like to clarify. Uh, you mentioned that we are responsible for all of the evacuation that went to the microden arena and the subsequent costs. Um, we know for a fact that on the first night, uh, there was probably sixty-five families. Of a hundred and twenty-five people uh, from the Champlain Provincial Park, but on the following day, there were another. Um, hundred people from Algonquin Park, uh, down in Kiask, which is not in Calvin Township. And that would be part of the costing. How, how is? And that would be part of the costing. How, how is that going forward?
On that note, I've been uh. During math, I'm going to say add, I'm not so sure that Ministry of Municipal Affairs is in love with Donna these days because I've been pushing for. There's no way that we should be responsible for the costs associated with the evacuees from Kiask Park. They did employ more beds, they, they did cost more food and there was a cost to um, to. They were there, a hundred of them. So who am I billing? And I'm every second day, who am I billing? I didn't get an answer yet. Who am I billing? I didn't get an answer yet. And yesterday. I was called before I called them and said, just to let you know, don't know who you're billing it. We're looking for an answer. So uh, and also Minister Fidelis on that also. So uh, we're, I'm continuing to push for that because. While it's reimbursable at ninety five percent, that's still five percent of the cost that our taxpayers will need to bear, no matter how minimal that amount is. So that angle is being worked on too.
Yeah, applies to interest, um, well, right.
Yeah.
So there's, there's a couple of costs there. It's not, it's not directly our cost, so. Absolutely. All right. Are there any other questions or comments? All right, can I have a mover and a second here to move forward on this report? Counselor Morton and Counselor Manson. Uh, whereas the municipality of Calvin recently experienced a wind and rain natural disaster event on June the twenty first, twenty twenty five. And has experienced incremental operating and capital costs. The council for the municipality of Calvin hereby requests the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing to activate. The municipal disaster recovery assistance, M D R program. And that Donna Maitland, C E O, has given a delegated authority to verify and attest to the accuracy of the metro claim. And further. That is outlined in the C E O report to council, C E O thirty one dash twenty twenty five. For cash flow purposes, that the mayor or deputy mayor and C E O be authorized to enter into agreements with Scotiabank. For the purpose of uh funding storm related expenses. That if certain storm uh event costs are deemed ineligible, that O C F funds be accessed to fund them. Any last comments?
I'm really sorry to do this, but I did forget to say that. Private sector and not for profit sectors who have been impacted by the storm do not fall under this application for funding. There's a separate application for funding for private sector, not for profit. For example, um, the Canadian Ecology Centre, any damage that they would have suffered and we cannot apply on anyone's we have. Uh, the Canadian, uh, the Conservation Authority has uh, they're still closed because they have to find someone to pick some cash to fund. Their uh, their costs, which I think are estimated at about forty thousand dollars. We can't apply for anyone else's infrastructure. And that's been made very clear and I double checked. And so anyone who's in the private sector whose homes were substantially damaged, we're not talking about. Um, you know, I need a couple loads of gravel in my driveway because my driveway fell apart that time. They're encouraged to contact the number that's on the website that says contract, uh, contact the Ontario Governments for Ontario Disaster Relief Fund. Because the minister has not activated that application until the minister determines and that through. Until the minister determines that there's been sufficient damage to private sector, not for profit sector, that application for funding will not open. So I asked just yesterday, uh, the Ministry of Municipal Affairs, are you going to be making an announcement for how people. Access this funding or who they should call? And the answer was no. So if you know anyone uh whose homes were damaged. Uh, or we're not answering any questions about eligibility for modern application, we're not involved in the review of it, we don't know it. They should content, go onto the website and contact the Ministry of Municipal Affairs to learn uh and to voice. That they need some help and for what reasons, and they will guide them along to how and when and if. There'll be an eligible program for not for profits and private sector. Sorry.
No, no problem.
Extend that.
Um, so I'm going to call it to a vote. All those in favor of the report? So let us carry. Eight point six Public Works Superintendent Report twenty twenty five dash fourteen. State of emergency procurement of goods and services.
Um, this is a report to uh follow the C E O's report in regards to the um, amount of funds she used to acquire. Um. Through the procurement of goods and services, the bylaw states that uh, I am permitted to spend money in a state of emergency. Um, however, that the next council meeting uh that I provide the report of the, of that sort of expenses. Um, so I'm not on the bylaw procurement and here we are. Um, I'm probably leave around two hundred and ninety five thousand into the uh work. And uh, asking permission to go to the allotted four hundred thousand if required.
Um. Are there any questions from anyone? Comments? Because I do have one. The build it better uh section of the report makes a, a lot of sense. Uh, our C E O just alluded to it. Um, if there is a, a section of repair. It, it doesn't always make sense just to repair to the state that it was before, especially if at some point in time we would have repaired it anyway. How, how much build it better is involved in, in what you're doing?
Uh, we're currently trying to ensure that we build all the culverts to a larger diameter. Um, I foresee about four thousand dollars difference in uh replacing the culverts with larger culverts. Um, the bridge is a big one. It's the, it's the twenty three thousand dollar difference. Um, as uh, the C E O had explained, this is the second time those Lego blocks take a swim down the creek. Um, so we're establishing a plan to place that uh. To put it in a better spot and a better angle and to anchor it to the bedrock. Um. And as you can see also, all the riprap material that's being used, filter cloth, clear stone, compaction. Uh. It wasn't a common practice before and we're following the erosion control methods of the North Bay Matt, Matt or Conservation Authority. Um, to hope that we are doing the right thing and building better.
Okay.
Especially at Cove East, the one hundred year storm. Uh, my recollection from two thousand eight would put us at about twenty years. Uh, so. Hopefully.
Yeah, and you know, it, it, it doesn't make sense to, if you have an eight inch culvert somewhere and it's plugged and, and it's completely. Uh, messed up to dig it out, put a, a, another eight inch culvert in when. It probably would be better with a ten inch culvert, for example.
We're going two feet actually. Twenty four inch culvert.
Okay, yeah.
And I do want to mention that the Ontario Government through the M D R application is caught on to the build it, build it better because when I first read. Through those guidelines very soon after the emergency, it clearly states they will not fund the build better. So then the advice to um, to Ann or Public Works Superintendent is get votes for build it better and build it back. So that we can clearly demonstrate to the Ontario Government when we submit our application. That there's, we have built it better, but we're not charging you for the build it better. Here's the quote for what it would have cost and if we replaced it to a state of its past uh, past uh, to its past date.
Which is uh. Uh, to reflect the asset management plan, all the data that we have collected, uh, we do know what's out there, how big around it is, where it's located. So, so uh, we have a, we have the data in place to be able to answer that.
Just a, a silly question. If we hadn't have dealt with the beaver problem, would we have had any more problems?
I guess you very well would have.
Yeah, I, I, I wondered about that, you know? Beaver dams holding back the water and then all of a sudden all of that going at the same time, so.
It's about, we have, well, let's see, on Friday. The amount of money that we've expended in uh managing our dangers.
Beavers came to town when they heard about the bylaw.
Another thing that we did also uh was to get all the drains inspected with the municipality for our farmers. Um, so I was able to meet the drainage superintendent and he also did an inspection of all the drains.
So that's an additional cost built into the five hundred. When I call Grant Noker, if anyone has met him before. He said that, that hadn't been done in a while, so the timing was good. So we'll get that drainage um. Just like the review of the bridges, that'll be covered through the M D R because it is an eligible cost to have them come out and do the inspection of the municipal drains.
Right. Any questions, comments? And yeah, for that. Just on a bribe, uh, how many culverts are you talking about?
Fourteen.
And how many are you upgrading?
Fourteen.
Okay. No, I mean, it's a reasonable thing. Like the mayor said, if you're going to do a twenty four inch culvert, you want it better to do a thirty inch, then go ahead.
Yeah, fourteen culverts. Cross culverts, which doesn't do bad. And you know, now that we have three hundred and thirty one. Or that the culvert is every driveway.
Right. Any other questions, comments? Then a mover or a second here to accept this report. Counselor Latimer and Counselor Manson. Whereas the Public Works Superintendent is providing the report for council indicating the estimated Public Works Department cost. Of the state of emergency for the storm uh that occurred on June the twenty first, twenty twenty five. Are estimated to be four hundred thousand dollars now. Therefore, be resolved in the council. Of the municipality of Calvin approves the Public Works Department storm related expenditures up to four hundred thousand. All in favor? Carry. Roundtable circus.
Speaking of circles, it's roundtable state of emergency update of verbal report.
Oh, there. Thank you. Where, where did I go? Eight point six. Oh, I see. It's because it's after eight point seven. Right. Uh, yes, roundtable state of emergency update. This is just a verbal report from all. Uh, I'd like, I'd like to start off, if, if I may. Um. This uh, state of emergency was big and uh, everyone did their part and everyone uh. Did a, a fantastic job, but uh, as the C E O mentioned, we went for a drive through Champlain Park. And I, and I have to tell you, although I, I watched the storm go around my house and I watched my road being washed out. You really didn't realize what this whole state of emergency was until you drive through that park. That is just the most. Devastating drive I think I've taken in, in a long time. And I'm sure you'll agree with me, Donna and, and uh, Jordan. It was just. Beyond belief to see these campsites every. Couple of uh, I don't know, fifty feet from each other and nothing but trees on top of everything. Like it was just a mass of trees. I can't even imagine during a heavy rainstorm. In the dark of night with a ninth to a hundred and fifty kilometer an hour wind, trying to walk over those trees or around those trees. To find people that are lost on these campsites. It was really an amazing, amazing job. So I just want to pass that on to the entire fire department. I, I'm in awe. I really am. So anyway, I'll let other people go on with the report, please.
From a fire perspective, uh, just to kind of where we're at today, um, all of our equipment's been uh. Replaced. Um, I'm still working through some equipment that I have from other fire departments to get it returned back to people. Um, we are a little bit behind on our training schedule now because of what happened and the amount of calls that we have, but we're, we were. Been working through it on our training nights to get caught back up again, just a little extra on training nights. Um. And the uh, the morale of the fire are all good. It's a big event like that brought a lot of people close together, so. It's been uh, for fire, it's been working out well, just getting things back on our feet after the event anyway.
Yeah.
Um. Unlike the fire department where things are vigorous and quick and totally crafty, we're still at it. Like baby cleaner. Um, one of our bigger projects, there's two big spots that still need to be accomplished and that'll be the Hackenbrook Bridge. Still working with our uh municipal engineer on that and the culvert that's just beyond that. Just beyond the fire department down the hill in that gully, uh, that's going to be a full road closure. So it'll be a, a bit of an interruption to the municipality.
Which culvert, sorry?
Uh, just past the fire department, not that, down in the gully, just.
Pass it just before you get the D nine twelve's.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just curious.
Yes, uh, so we will put.
That's where you have the little uh chromes.
Uh, yes. Um, it's undermined on that side. Um, so anyways, it's uh. Estimated that it'll probably take about a week. So that would be a bit of a complication for our traveling public, but. However, the great thing about Calvin is that you can almost get anywhere from anywhere. Um.
Six hundred and fifty transport trucks would agree.
Yeah. Um, so it's still at that point. Um. I think we'd have a great debriefing and I'll leave that for the C E O to describe.
Just, just to mention as well, the fire department was at the center of this emergency because of all the trees down. But the roads department did a really phenomenal job too in getting out and getting the roads half fixed.
Yeah.
Um, right away. And let's face it, it was uh amazing that no one died in the park. But it was also amazing that no one died in the rest of the township. And, and I think, you know, the fact that you guys got a. And got those roads half fixed so that you could see if anybody was in distress was, was really incredible too.
Right. I, and like we're a team and I think like. Uh, the fire department needs us to have the roads open so they can attend and we need the fire department to attend to our people, so. Um, it goes hand in hand and that's why I guess it's called municipality.
Right.
Hey.
We can, if, you know, any of the counselors might have things.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a quick comment just about my experience, you know, with the roads and, and uh, that night I had to travel and drop someone off at. The Four Corners Boundary Peddlers and uh, you know, there's some major trees obviously down there, but it was really, even at, even at uh, ten o'clock the night of, I think it was ten. Ten thirty or eleven o'clock the night of, I could travel boundary until, till Paul was down. And there's a gentleman from Paperno that was cutting, just open a lane, right? And uh, you know, super impressed, even saw our roads are just not often travel, you know, or less traffic roads. I mean. The lane, like within twenty four hours, basically we had a single lane open everywhere, which to me is uh very impressive and super important that. You know, it doesn't have to be in perfect condition, but so that in case emergencies, vehicles can move. And uh, I just thought that was a, a, a great thing that we were able to get some of these roads open to minimum one lane. Uh, although rough, but, but you know, movable. And so uh, yeah, I think that was, that was a good thing that we did. I think there's a lot of things that. You know, I'm not gonna pat myself on the back, but uh, the rest, the rest of everybody, staff and council, there's a lot of things that we did in preparation. I suppose by chance, but uh, through some of our H R decisions, through the uh, emergency management plan, through the communication things that. Needed to be done. Luckily, we're in place because it, you know. It could have went much differently, you know, but I think it would be. Not unrealistic for a very small municipality to have a very different experience uh in terms of managing something like that. So I think overall. Um, we have a lot that went well, thank God and thank God no one died. And uh, yeah, so just a couple of brief comments from myself. I was. Was mostly impressed and you know, and now uh, we have experience, so things hopefully doesn't happen again, but. I don't, I keep smelling.
Can't control the weather.
Keep smelling that smoke coming across from Northern Ontario and I keep thinking fingers crossed. You can't control the weather, so you know, we'd be as ready as we can to deal with issues.
I'll go last after.
Okay, and. Any comments, any? It's kind of prophetic that our uh situational uh training for emergency management was on a windstorm. It almost uh mirrored what happened that night. Uh, that in fact, they've blamed Julie during the call. I said, did you uh plan this? But uh, it was great. Everybody was great. I was in the middle of it, but you guys were doing all the work. I was just. Sitting on the, like I said, while you were working, I was sitting on my ass, so.
I think we're like being a tighter.
Yeah.
Or a family.
Counselor Morton says that he was uh sitting on his rear, but that's not true. I, I, I know that uh. You were there all night as well and the, the communications, which was problematic throughout everything. Made you run out to the front of the building to answer a cell phone call, to run back into the building, to relay information on the radio, to run back outside to. So I don't know that there was that. so I don't know that there was that much sitting involved, and it's a lot better than what they were doing. Well, that's true.
But his position's extremely important in the fire department, we appreciate everybody's input.
Well, I truly was sitting on my butt, and I didn't, I didn't even realize, you know, watched the lightning and and saw the winds at night, but I didn't realize until dawn of fall in the next morning that this was a ridiculously high magnitude event. It, cause it just seemed like uh from our, you know, run peddlers to the uh to the west, just a little, you know, it was a big storm, so uh, just to then to become uh aware of everything unfolding that next morning was incredible, and just to see all the things that we practiced for, say, we, in terms of the getting the emergency management plan in place, getting the people, getting, you know, and we needed it, so it was, you know, some of these policies that come through from uh above, we, I shake my head a little bit, but in terms of the emergency preparedness mandates that we had to fill, that's uh, that was excellent, we did a great job doing it in preparation, and then staff executed in an amazing way, so it was very impressive.
First, you have anything? Councillor Latimer, any comments?
No, I agree, someone's already said, I think it's a testament to the people that we have, um, you know, staff and uh and leadership, and you can train, you can plan, but how you respond to a disaster like this is is not really something you can prepare for. How you respond, it didn't turn into total confusion, and people reacted so quickly to make things right, I think it really is a, is quite a, quite a compliment to uh to the people who were on the ground, the boots on the ground. Yeah, like, you know, how how much can you say? It's such a terrible, it's it's hard to believe or or um realize the the damage that was done, and how bad it could have been, how much worse it could have been. But uh, yeah, great teamwork and proud of the people, proud to be part of a community that could respond like this, it's really quite amazing.
So just to echo what everyone says, you know, I've been so proud to be part of this team since I've come along and we've built a better team, no, speaking of building better, we've built a really better team here in the last two and a half years, and I am so incredibly proud to be part of that team. And when I say team of staff, I also include, you know, the volunteer firefighters in that because everyone pulled every bit of their weight, no matter how little or how much they weighed that night, and into the next day, so, and we got her done, and I, and and I do agree with what you said, I think that people would have been shocked and surprised to learn that Calvin pulled this off without the help of everyone who did assist us in the outskirts. Um, that wouldn't have been possible, having said that. Um, on Wednesday of last week, we had our debrief with Emergency Management Services with the uh, O P P, Fire from Madawatt was here, uh, the Madawatt staff were here because we really relied on their emergency management group. Uh, so we were all together and debriefed how things went, and I can tell you that what went super well, what was unanimous in that group of twenty-two of us, I think it was, was that little Calvin pulled this off, and that while we talk about the communication systems that were really lacking and are are lacking in the municipality, those who communicate for a living, their communication systems were worse off than ours were because they didn't know how to communicate with each other. They didn't have the line of communication, and I believe that our storm event really did teach them some lessons, and they're going to be going away and talking about how they can improve because of what it was due that day and that night and into the next few days. Um, so we did, I I, we did everything right, I can't think of anything that we did wrong. We did everything right into the best of our abilities and beyond, you know, in those near twenty-four hours, so kudos to everyone involved, and you know, to those groups and the individuals who came from Madawatt or the Legion, the individual people, and just in case you're wondering, um, Councillor Latimer and and Councillor Grant, why I didn't call you? Because I knew that um, hopefully in in bed beside him at six o'clock in the morning, whatever it was, was the manager of Tim Hortons who could go get some food and some drinks to our fire people, um, to open up that store, so that's why I called Councillor Manson that night. Um, so that very early morning. Um, I just want to remind you that uh, in the spring, we had an application to Emergency Management Ontario for communication systems and other things, and we were declined that application for the radios and receivers because I had checked erroneously, unlike all other funders, what is this going to impact should you receive these, this receiver, this uh um, not the receiver, but the uh
Repeater.
repeater and the radios, and I checked all boxes that applied because it was that important to us. The only reason I am told at the time that we were declined is because I didn't focus in that application on one of the items that this grant was made for. This grant to us would have been so important because it did check off all the boxes. And the rationale for why we did not get this particular grant is that we didn't focus in on one. We proved how important that those communication systems are, in that every single box had we had those up-to-date communication systems would have been checked off, and that we would have met every one of those requirements. So I can assure you, the Minister of Emergency Management Ontario is going to be reminded very quickly about how that was a bad idea to decline us, and that we have now proof, and their Emergency Management Ontario personnel have proof about why we needed them and so many others to come in, because we lack the communication systems and tools to carry out this emergency, so I'm going back there too, that grant system's closed now, but I mean, ever the hopeful, um, I think that, you know, when the uh Minister saw for herself the devastation in that park, and, you know, to echo your, you know, comments about when you went around, and I wasn't there in the truck with Jordan, you know, when he was passing through with the minister and M P P and everyone in that truck. But when you came upon that trailer that had a little toddler bicycle in front of it, and you saw that trailer was just crashed in the middle and the, you know, the mattress was standing up inside, it's like, these guys are in the dark, and you run up against a little person, it's like, I can't imagine what a fire chief went through, you know, seeing that again for the first time, and what they went through that night. Um, it just brought up such a wow, and as you've and everyone has said, it's amazing things didn't happen, but I can't imagine what it would have felt like to be up against seeing a little bicycle and no people outside, and you don't know what's going to happen when you open that trailer door. Um, I, you know, so kudos again to our fire people, and, you know, answered me, referred to our roads department as two-point-five men. When we think about all the great things that happened in such a short time in our roads, two-point-five men carried that out. And so we, you know, our two-point-five men did such an amazing job in such a short time. And uh, yeah, nothing could have prepared us for this, but we were prepared because we had so many things on the go and um, everyone just did an amazing job, so it ain't over yet, just because it's over, and there's lots of work ahead of us, and that's it, that's all I have to say about that, I wish it was the last time we get to talk about it.
You mentioned uh, that uh, the, I think it was the minister sug- suggested, maybe Joe Dunlop suggested that this would be a case study, that they were, that they would focus on Calvin as a case study, or somebody said that they would do a case study. And I just hope that they can remember that Calvin is spelt C A L V I N.
Oh, right, and we did bring that up at the debrief when I introduced um the room, I reminded everyone, because, God, everyone was from here. That please, when you're talking about the storm, remember that it occurred in Calvin, not in Madawatt. Um, and that's all something that we need to, you know, we spoke of that in our more sessions of the past, and the recognition of Calvin, and that there is a Calvin, and unfortunately, our mailing office is Madawatt, unfortunately, even news, when, you know, Mayor Bull was interviewing with them, and we are here in the community center of Madawatt at the end of the day. So, everyone that day, and I will continue to, and I hope that everyone keeps reminding people that we are in Calvin, we are a separate organization, and we are a separate municipality, we are Calvin.
Calvin, good job. Thank you, everybody. So, uh, I I guess uh, the next item on the agenda is agencies, boards, and committees. Um, uh, first up, Bill Morton, the North Bay Madawatt Preservation Authority.
Well, in our last meeting was in June, and I submitted a report based on that meeting, it's within the package. Since that time, I, the finance officer has submitted a financial statement for twenty twenty-four that hasn't been presented to the board yet, our next meeting will be until August thirteenth. And uh, I was asked by several people in the community about the status of the O'Clair Gorge. Uh, when I checked with the C A O of the Conservation Authority, they said they're negotiating with Calvin Work Roads Crew to do some work up there, and I said, oh, well, so she said, maybe sometime in August. I said, well, that'd be better than the park, because the park, they told us at the debrief that they're gonna shut down for the summer.
Well, thank you. Uh, East Nevison Planning Board, we had a meeting last night, uh, Councillor Grant, you mind if I go ahead?
Yeah, you know.
Uh, we had a meeting last night, uh, I have provided the minutes for the June meeting, but as they were only made available last night, they won't show up until our next meeting uh uh agenda. Uh, but at the the meeting last night, we did talk about um the fact that every ten years, um, the zoning and planning review has to be done. And that is going to be five years from now, uh, that a a new uh planning and zoning review has to be done, and the average cost is a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, and that's today's prices, so that's going to be a cost to the uh uh, the East Nevison Planning Board, and with that increased cost in mind, it is probably going to mean some possible increases in severance applications. So if anybody in Calvin is looking at doing a severance application, I I encourage you to get out, do it right away, because uh costs may go up in the future. Anything you want to add?
Yeah, I mean, I can just add to that a bit, I mean, there's um, there's provincial policy statements that are required to be built in, new ones that are required to be built into plan. It was very similar discussion to, like, say, our asset management, the mood. And it's just like, you know, um, I'm speaking formally, but the costs are just, you know, it's constantly costs piling up. Uh, the planning board has a quite a small, you know, there's not a lot of money there, it's run very um lean. Um, so, um, we're investigating, um there was a desire possibly to rewrite the official plan, but they had said fifty to a hundred thousand, but, you know, significant cost. So it was an investigation as to building, trying to find an economical way to get the new policy statements into the official plan without rewriting the whole plan, and, you know, likely get a later date because the the funds are an issue. Um, but uh, it's, it's highly likely the cost of severance will increase, and at the end of the day, I mean, um it'll be down the road, we'll see, but the the likely levies, some likely levies are gonna increase too, I mean, to to fund the I would say increased cost of planning, um, but we are, you know, uh exploring options and trying to uh be very frugal as a board.
Very frugal.
Very frugal, yeah. I don't know if you wanted to.
No, well, that's good.
Yeah.
Exactly, it's nail on the head. Um, position recruitment, there has been no meeting, so uh, there's no report at this point in time. Madawatt Police Service Support, that's Councillor Grant.
Uh, I had made some really major notes and forgot them, um, so, but I'm gonna go on memory. Um, basically, once again, this is a uh actually quite a frugal board as well, um it it just really is, um, it's uh, it's been the football because uh, we're lacking a secretary. Um, but there's discussion to possibly have a person that can fill that role. Um, there was a mention of a community safety plan that we have to develop. Uh, it's not, I I'm still trying to clarify, to be honest, there's some very specific questions from uh staff as to, you know, what specifically the board's role is, and so the best I can do is next meeting, try to get some more clarification, send some emails, but um, this community safety plan, I guess, is the cost of municipalities. Um, not the board, and it's, and just so everyone's aware for budgeting, it's not built into the uh into the the budget for this, it would not be built into our budget, so I I'm trying to see some clarification, I know Donna's also made efforts to see when and how much, and um, so that is just a couple of things there, and um just, I guess, while I'm here talking about it, the um, there will be an increase in the cost because um, there is in the budget, there's no tax on the insurance, so it would be taxed out of the insurance, and and I think, I think there's some notes and disclosures, it was my, myself amongst others, I don't remember, but uh we had suggested that if, you know, we create a budget, we perceive there might be costs, we should try to just at least add a disclosure, so it's not as subjective. But um, so there's a few extra things that are likely going to add to the cost, but uh just so everyone's aware, the cost is five thousand bucks in the budget. So it's likely, maybe, you know, I don't know. The whole budget for the whole board, not our portion, likely might be six by the time we're done, I don't know. But, so, anyway, just trying to add some background there. I don't know, there's lots to do, there's all kinds of policies and things that we need to do, and it's just a slow-moving apparatus, but uh we meet only quarterly, and we don't have a secretary, so we're doing what we can, I think, and that's what we're doing.
Thank you very much.
Update, any questions? Oh, I did want to make one last point too, I wish I would have wrote my notes, um, interestingly enough, um, the municipal levies with the population-based. Um, uh, it was mentioned, it was mentioned by someone there, uh, that the other boards have actually taken a similar approach.
Good.
Um, based on uh, based on what we had decided.
Yes, the population-based.
I think that's, that's a really cool thing, um, and I think it's a more equitable way to distribute those costs, so.
Excellent.
Yeah.
You have a website?
We have a website too, now, I wish I would have wrote my notes, uh, we do have a website now, um, and uh, there's some things posted on there. Um, well, everything we need to post, we're gonna post, and I just got an email today for another policy, uh uh, conduct policy that we're gonna, we have to place a base, and um there, I don't remember the the person's name, but there's someone from the province working with us, trying to help us uh get all these administrative things in order, and once again, this is all happening without a secretary, so, but that is also in the works. And meeting quarterly really makes things slow, so it's moving along.
All right, thank you, Councillor Grant. Uh, the Ecology Centre. Um, I have been speaking to Bill Skier, and he tells me we will be meeting in August. Uh, the Ecology Centre was, of course, in the middle of Champlain Park, and uh if I can ask the fire chief, have we heard anything about when they're gonna open that road? Yeah, because of course, the road is closed because people's campers and cars are still in the park, and I imagine that's
The road into the park, you're talking or the Ecology Centre, so.
Well, you have to use the road into the park to get to the Ecology Centre, so.
Yeah, um, I haven't heard anything, um, I've been talking to Joe McNabb there quite a bit, they're they put out to the public that they're gonna try to open the front side somewhere in August, and they're not too sure if that's actually gonna happen, just because of the the time it's, it's taking uh insurance companies to come and remove these vehicles from the park, and then the forestry companies are kind of waiting at the same time to get the cars out of the way so they can do their jobs, and they're all in a prime crunch with the logs being on the ground, so they are working as fast as they can, but right now, I don't think there's a date that they've actually.
The reason I ask is, of course, Bill wants to have a meeting at the Ecology Centre in August, but it may not happen because if that road's still closed.
He might be able to set up that with the the park bill and have you guys in as special guests, and they're, they'll, they usually they'll escort you in and escort you out just for safety concerns, but.
Right on. But for for now, um, the uh, the Ecology Centre is in disarray as well, so um, there's not much to report there until.
um, there's not much to report there until we know more about what's going on in the park. Um, the uh, Castle Home uh, Exit Strategy, uh, C A O and I were talking about this and said, well, there's nothing to report on the exit strategy. Um, everything's still on hold, um, but we are uh, invited to a meeting of a different nature uh, regarding Castle Home, I don't remember the date, it's.
Wednesday, I think.
Next Wednesday.
Tuesday or Wednesday.
And uh, maybe we'll have something to report about uh, what's going on at Castle Home after that meeting has taken place.
So that meeting specifically about the North Tower.
Yes, the Castle Home.
Exit Strategy.
No.
Or the committee that was formed by Castle Home to deal with
And.
extra costs.
That extra cost meeting that I volunteered to be on has not met yet and I keep getting told, yes, yes, gonna meet in two weeks' time, but the two weeks is fluid, it's always two weeks from today, so in three days, it's two weeks from three days from now, so.
And in August, uh, when I'm at A M O in Ottawa, uh, Madowa, we haven't heard yet, but Madowa and I um, on behalf of Calvin, will be meeting with the new minister yet again, another minister in that department, so we've asked for delegations and ministers to talk about Castle Home again. We haven't had the answer, but whether or not our request to go in there with um, that person has been approved or not, we typically wouldn't hear until the week before. Um, so just so that you know, we're gonna be on the agenda again to meet with the newest minister.
That'll be in two weeks' time, right?
Yeah.
So, so, uh, all right, so that's it for the agency boards and committees. Uh, can I have uh, any questions or discussion from anyone? Done. Uh, then if I can have a mover and a seconder to move this forward. Counselor Morton, Counselor Manson, now therefore be resolved that Council for the Corporation, this file of Calvin accepts the agency's board committee reports and or minutes provided by council members at this meeting, all those in favor? Thank you very much, that's Carrie. So the next item on the agenda is a closed meeting, uh, just need a mover and a seconder to move into a closed meeting. Counselor Manson, Counselor Morton, seconds. Um, uh, now therefore be resolved, Council for the Corporation, Municipality, Calvin move into closed session at eight fourteen P M. Uh, to discuss uh, educating or training members of the council, local boards or committees, and that's section two thirty-nine, three point one. All those in favor? And that is period, we are moving into closed. So thank you, uh.
Everyone's staying.
Oh, everyone's staying.
Training session.
Oh, okay, well, I I need a five-minute break.